Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays in the council chambers at 10 o'clock. We also on the first Friday of the month, meet in the Van Nuys City Hall. You can join us by going to www.lacity.org, also to see us on Channel 35. As well as both San Pedro and Van Nuys, you can be able to testify from those two locations. Friday is our normal presentation day. I'd like to thank council members Alacon, Cardenas, Wieser, Parks, Perry, Reyes, and Zine, and ask that the following council members to please make their way down to council chambers. That would be council members Han, Labange, as well as Mr. Smith and Mr. Weiss to make their way down to the council chambers. We do have a bear quorum today, colleagues, and would ask, and we will lose quorum at 12 noon. So, just, that is an informational item. Again, we will lose quorum at 12 noon today. So, as we go through our presentations and items before us, when we do receive a quorum of 10, we will run through the agenda. We do have our first presentation, I think, ready to go, and that would be CD7, Council Member Alacon. Are you, okay. Are you ready, Mr. Cardenas? You asked, if Mr. Cardenas is ready, he can go next. Or you want to go first? And if not, we can go to Ms. Perry. So, we're, they're ready? Okay. CD7, okay. Mr. Alacon. After Mr. Alacon, we will have Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Labange is not here yet, but then we'll go to Ms. Perry.
You snooze, you lose. Okay, I'd like to be joined up here by the Smart Irrigation retrofit program team from Recreation and Parks. Members, you all know we're in a drought, and there's been a lot of fallout about what we need to do to reduce our water use. As you also know, the Department of Water and Power has been trying to expand programs to have smart irrigation throughout the city, particularly in city facilities. So, today, I am here to announce the second class of Smart Irrigation retrofit program graduates who have been working to reduce our water use by installing smart irrigation systems in the Department of Recreation and Parks. Twenty-four young adults have gone through the program. They range between the ages of 18 and 24 years of age. The program is funded by DWP, and the basic skills is funded by CDD, and taught by Valley College instructors. The program started on February 4th, 2008. Students receive hands-on construction training Monday through Thursday, and attend classes at Valley College on Fridays, where they receive 60 hours of training course on construction, basic landscaping, and irrigation. The training consists of six months of basic skills, instruction, and workplace life skills. Ten thousand, I'm sorry, 1,040 hours of hands-on training with the city professional maintenance staff, and most importantly, they get paid. Valley Crest Companies, which began in North Hollywood and now has 10,000 employees, partners with the city and provides employment to its graduates. So, all of these young men who have been working on this program will be hired by Valley Crest. In fact, I believe they've already received their offers. As you can see, they're nodding because I know they just had their interviews last week. And I believe they all were offered jobs by Valley Crest. The first class had 14 smart irrigation workers, of which six were hired as full-time employees with Valley Crest Companies. This class has seven, and all of them will be working with Valley Crest next week. On December 9th, 2008, the Smart Irrigation Program received the Quality and Productivity Award from the City of Los Angeles Quality and Productivity Commission. On March 6th, 2009, they received a California and Pacific Southwest Recreation and Park Award for Excellence. So, we are here, oh, and by the way, it needs to be said that the young people that have been hired into this program are what many would describe as at-risk. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're offenders, but what it does mean is they may have had long-term bouts with unemployment, they may come from broken families, difficult situations, single-parent situations. But what I can tell you is, they will be fully employed next week by Valley Crest. And so, I can't say enough for the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Water and Power, and of course, Valley Crest Companies, because this is an outstanding program. When, as Tony Carlos knows, the first thing that any gang program will tell you is the best way to reduce gang involvement is to get the people a full-time job. Now, nobody's suggesting that any of these people would be involved with gangs, or have been, or would be, but the point is that getting young people to earn a decent wage, and by the way, this is very hard work. It's not easy. There's a lot of ditches being dug by these young people, and a lot of construction work as well. So, this is a very, very special program. If I can get the certificates, I'd like to hand them out. I was signing them as we began the program, but I think we got the significant ones signed that we're going to distribute right now. Okay, first of all, I'd like to present a certificate to the Department of Water and Power. Is somebody here from the Department of Water and Power?
Tom Gasetter.
Oh, Tom Gasetter? Thank you, Tom. Would you like to make some comments?
Sure. That way, I can get organized.
Good morning. On behalf of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, we are a proud partner in this program. This is an opportunity to train some very valuable employees, potentially future City of Los Angeles employees, and certainly employees that are going to work in the city's parks, which are jewels of the city. Very, very great opportunities, great assets for the City of Los Angeles. The smart, excuse me, the smart irrigation systems that are, these young men and women are installing are state-of-the-art systems that will save the city of Los Angeles water for years to come. And again, I would congratulate all of the recent graduates, and again, DWP is a proud partner in this program, and we're happy to be here today. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you.
Now, from Recreation and Parks, John McCreary.
Thank you, council member. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here on a different subject and a happier moment for the department. As you know, we take conservation very serious in our department. Water conservation is a necessity. It's a reality to this area. And if you think about what these men and women are doing, we've done eight parks in the city so far, 20 acres. Now, why is that important? With smart irrigation, every acre we irrigate, we save one acre foot of water a year. Now, to put that in something that means sense to us and the people watching, every acre saves 1,600,016-ounce bottles of water. So, in essence, with the 20 acres that we've done so far, we could give every citizen of LA about three 16-ounce bottles of water. Now, we have a number of sites coming up. We have Lincoln Park, we're going to have Richie Valens, we're going to do Lauren Miller. Those are the three parks that we're going to do smart irrigation. But we didn't just do smart irrigation. With the Department of Water and Power, we're doing recycled water. And Hanson Dam, we just completed, and that's a golf course. We did, we're doing Balboa Park, and of course, the biggest park that we've done in a while, Rio de los Angeles, will all be on reclaimed water, recycled water. Now, why is that important? Well, it's important because now we can irrigate these parks in and around any ordinance you adopt on water conservation. So, what we're trying to do with this program, with the council, with the mayor, in fact, I have to give the mayor credit, the Getty House is on smart irrigation. It's the number-one rated municipal building for water conservation to date that we've done. So, we're committed to this. We thank you. I want to thank the Department of Water and Power, because without them, and it started with Ron Deaton, and of course, GoA David Nahai, the mayor's office, Marcus Allen, when he was a deputy chief of staff, actually got behind this program. So, we have a lot of synergy here, but the real issue, the only reason I really got behind this program was the kids. I'm also on the Workforce Improvement Board. I know we need to bring youth into the mainstream. We just can't keep talking about it. So, we're bringing in kids, we're training them, we got a partnership with some commercial Valley Crest to hire them. This is a win for this city, and I don't think there's any other agency in the United States doing as much for water conservation now and training our youth as we are doing with the Department of Water and Power, Community Development Department, of course, my own staff at Wreckin' Parks. So, thank you for allowing me to be here on a more pleasant subject, and thank you, council member, for giving recognition to the staff. Oh, and thank you.
And now, representing Valley Crest, Bethany Schwab. We have a great relationship with Valley Crest. In fact, in the 7th Council District, we, Valley Crest donated a park that they constructed. The land was donated by some homeowners that, under the DWP power lines, and they actually donated the entire construction of the park with assistance, of course, of Wreckin' Parks. So, with that, Bethany Schwab.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to follow us with Valley Crest. We love working with these kids, and, you know, last year, we did it as well, and it's been a success, and we hope to continue this partnership in the future. So, thank you.
And every single one of these young people was recommended to the program through the WorkSource Centers sponsored by the Community Development Department. So, we have a certificate for them. They are not here today. Also, Los Angeles Valley College provides the training, and so, do we have a representative?
Yes, we do.
My name is Michael Tompkins, and I teach the basic skills for these students, and it's been my pleasure to teach them. We started out in November, and they all have achieved very well in their pre and post tests, and I was very honored to be a part of this program. So, thank you very much.
He's one of the instructors?
No, it's, we have CDD.
Okay, okay. Oh, CDD is here, so let me introduce.
Linda Minz.
Linda Minz from Community Development Department.
Hello. It's been a great honor to work with the various departments, DWP, Wreckin' Parks, and always we are pleased to support our youth, train them, and get them ready for future jobs.
I'm going to hand these out. There's not that many of them, so I'm going to call them out very quickly. You might have heard, you might have heard my daughter Camila in the background screaming with joy, I hope, but the reason she is so excited is because her brother participated in this program. So, I can speak from personal experience that this is an excellent program. We have seen a transformation of this young man, and I believe that is reflected in each of these people's lives. Not in good condition before they arrived to the program in terms of their, the life experience they were having, and to see them graduate, I can tell you again, on a personal level, this is a program that works. This is the kind of program the city should be doing.
If you want to just call out their names, then we have Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange.
Okay. Desmond Dunne? Jose Acevedo? Jose Aquiano? Oh, Andean, I'm sorry. Joshua Martinez? I'll sign him later. Marcos Leon?
Thank you, thank you. Best dress.
Nicolo Marinas? Sean Birdsong? Edgar Becerra? David Gonzalez? He's an instructor, no? Juan Gonzalez? Another instructor? Edwards Zapata? Dana Valdez? I can't say enough for the instructors. They've been, they are more like family to these young men in terms of guiding them. So, we want to thank everybody for their participation in this program.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange.
I just want to rise and thank Councilman Alacon for recognizing these young people. Director McCreary, I know you take a lot of heat, and sometimes we sound ungrateful, but the truth is, we're just as focused on our young people and our families and our parks, and we're there to support you. So, I guess some people would call it tough love, but the fact is, we have to make what we can with what we have. And Dana's been there, I've seen her through all the different park programs, and your staff is always hustling. Thank you for your hard work, and for the young folks. I hope this inspires you to continue moving forward with education, that hopefully someday you can see yourselves behind this microphone and trying to make good for our city. And it always starts with these baby steps, but they continue to get bigger, and sometimes harder, but you continue to advance, and hopefully you're inspired to do that. Thank you very much, Councilman Alacon.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Richard, I came in late, but I thank you. When I heard the words of Recreation and Parks, and when I heard the words of Water and Power, and I heard the words of Valley Crest, which I truly agree isn't the best, and Mr. Reyes, Valley Crest did a great job in the Rio, and then the cornfields, and the work that they've done, and now water conservation is just so important. So, I just wanted to take a minute to thank you, Richard, who is always there in this effort to try to engage in this area here, and thank you for recognizing those who are learning this very important thing about water conservation. Mr. McCreary and I often talk about it, because I don't want to see us choke off our parks because of the water crisis, but also, if we could do it right, we can again enhance the park experience that many people are going to enjoy this weekend as we gather in Memorial Day, both at events and also just playing old picnic. So, congratulations. Thank you, Richard, and thank each and every one of you for their recognition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alacon.
Finally, we just want to congratulate these young people. I know they're going to do very well at Valley Crest. We're hopeful that they are able to return to the city family, perhaps at DWP, to expand the water conservation program, maybe at Wreckin' Parks when we are in hiring mode as well, but in any case, this is a program that needs to be advanced. Congratulations to the young people. They are successful, and we wish them continued success.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Grue, Han, Wieser, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Roswell, Smith, Weiss, President Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, on the regular agenda, item one is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 12, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application.
Do we need a motion or not?
Yes, you do.
Mr. Smith, would you like to make the motion or not? Yes, okay, thank you. We will accept that as moving that item. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 10 ayes, thank you. Next items?
Items 2 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held.
I'm sorry, say it again, 2 through 8?
Items 2 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Yes, Mr. Alacon has called item 2 special. Any other specials, colleagues? On 2 through 8, public hearings have been held previously. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. 10 ayes, thank you. Next items?
Items 9 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. On item 11, there is a request to continue that matter to Tuesday, May 26.
That will be continued to May 26?
And you do have cards on a number of those items?
I know, I have items 9, 11, 13 are the three that I have. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
13.
You have to, okay, we're calling that special. If we do not get another member present, you'll, we will have to continue it to Tuesday. 9, 11, and 13, Madam Clerk, excuse me, 11 is going to be continued, so.
And Madam President, on item 14, I'm not sure if that's a verbal report to be submitted today or not.
We'll hold it on the desk for the moment. Ask Mr. Alacon's office to let us know how they want to proceed on that. Again, colleagues, we will only have a quorum until noon today. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 10, 12, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Close the roll and tabulate the votes. 10 ayes, okay. Next item?
On the continuation agenda, item 19 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on that.
That will be called special.
That would take care of the items called special.
Great. So, colleagues, we then have item 2, actually was called special as well, I don't see it on the board, 2, 9, 13, and 14, and 19. Okay, we'll go back to our next presentation. Mr. Cardenas? Mr. Cardenas will be followed by Mr. Labange after that.
Thank you very much, Madam President, members of the council, and the public. Today, it's an honor and a privilege to bring before you the men and women of the Los Angeles City Fire Department and the Muscular Dystrophy Association to help me declare May as MDA ALS Awareness Month, and honor them for their efforts during the 2009 Fill the Boot Campaign in the City of Los Angeles. Please welcome them today. The Fill the Boot Campaign is a 50-year-old tradition that began in the West Coast as the brainchild of two Nevada firefighters in 1954 who wanted to do something for Jerry's Kids. They grabbed their boots and went out to their community and collected donations. All proceeds of the Fill the Boot Campaign will help provide comprehensive medical services to tens of thousands of adults and children with neuromuscular disease, and contributes to research for treatment and cures. Muscular dystrophy is a genetic disorder that weakens the muscles that help the body move. People with muscular dystrophy have incorrect or missing information in their genes, which prevents them from making the proteins they need for healthy muscles. Muscular dystrophy weakens muscles over time, so children, teens, and adults who have the disease can gradually lose the ability to do the things most of us take for granted, like walking or sitting up. Amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, or Lou Gehrig's disease, is one such neuromuscular disease. ALS is a progressive disorder that causes paralysis and destroys the nerve cells that control voluntary muscle movement. A person diagnosed with ALS typically lives three to five years after diagnosis. Each day, an estimated 15 people are diagnosed with ALS, and there are approximately 30,000 Americans currently living with ALS. MDA is the world leader in ALS research and services, funding over $24 million in 2009 alone, which surpassed the combined efforts of all other non-governmental health agencies dedicated to ALS. That money will go towards advancing research and support MDA ALS centers, and help defray the cost of medical equipment, including wheelchairs, leg braces, and communication devices. This year, I put out the challenge to all of the Angelenos to dig deep and beat the total donations collected in 2008. In 2008, we collected $161,832. So far, in this year's campaign, Angelenos have raised an astounding $196,465. That's nearly $35,000 more than last year. $528,748 have been raised by the LA City and LA County firefighter departments combined for MDA and ALS Division and Jerry's Kids. In addition to LA City and LA County firefighters departments across the state and nation, across the nation, they have collected $200 million nationwide for MDA since 1954 for the Fill the Boot Campaign. I think it's important for us to recognize that the number of $196,000, which is $35,000 more than we raised last year, and when you look on the radio, you hear the radio, and see on television when people are talking about how bad the economy is, I think it's a tribute to all Americans and all Angelenos to see that no matter what the economy is, we rise to the occasion, and we're there for our fellow Americans and people who need our support and our help. So, one thing that I'd like to do is bring forward someone who knows that spirit and is part of the organization, and that's Tom Coring to say a few words.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here. I think it's a wonderful honor to be able to participate in this proclamation. My wife passed away in 2003 from ALS, and I promised her before she went that I would spend, until the time was not needed, every moment I could, finding a cure and an awareness of ALS. And since that time, the amount of awareness has exponentially expanded. The, there's a national campaign with the baseball associations to honor Lou Gehrig this next month, or in July. This type of thing that's happening today in the city council is so important to help with this insidious disease and its final destruction. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Also, to share a few words, we have the Gil family here with us.
Hi, my name is Adnan.
Is it on?
Hi, this is Adnan. I'm honored to be here. I just wanted to thank the councilmen, firefighters, and MDA. This disease is very debilitating. It's like getting trapped in your body. You're alive, but thanks to MDA, which has become our second family, and firefighters who not only help us through, you know, save us through fires and emergencies, they're in their spare time. They're collecting money for us. That's unbelievable, that's beyond and above their duty. So, just want to thank everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And also, as I mentioned, it's our firefighters, the men and women who have these boots throughout the community for the last couple of weeks, asking people for donations, and that's where we got the $195,000. And with us today is Pat McCosker to speak on behalf of UFLAC, the local 112, local 112 involvement in the Fill the Boot Campaign to show why and how they've been in the Fill the Boot Campaign, to show why and how they've been supporting us over the years.
Thank you, councilmembers. First of all, I want to apologize for the second time this week being in front of this microphone dressed in my play clothes. The reason for that is we're barbecuing on the south lawn, we're feeding lunch to folks, and it's a fundraiser for MDA and as the councilmember-
Right outside of City Hall?
Right outside of City Hall, from 11 to 1:00. And it's a fundraiser to try to get us over that $200,000. We're real close to having collected for this wonderful charity $200,000 this year. So, if by some miracle you're all done by lunchtime, come on out and join us, please, and everyone else, please join us. But, you know, I guess we're being thanked today by the councilmember, and it's, I appreciate it very much, but I want to say, we thank you. We thank, first of all, Councilmember Cardenas for being our point man on this here in the council, he's been fantastic, but to all of you and to the mayor and everybody in this city for giving us the chance to go out in the streets and collect like we do. It's only been a few years that we've been allowed to do this. It's been the fifty-five-year charity of our International Association of Firefighters, but here in LA, you've all just recently let us do this, and that's the same, the same is true. I want to thank Fire Chief Doug Berry and his administration, because prior to him being here, we didn't have permission. I want to thank, you know, the victims of the disease, they are our inspiration, they're fantastic, and they are the true heroes, and it's an honor to try to do something for them. I want to thank my coworkers who are out there with the boots, you know, that's, those are the people that put themselves out there and ask people to give. It's not always easy, and I really, really appreciate that they've embraced this program as well. And then finally, I think I just want to say that, you know, we're just blessed and honored that we can do this. We deal as firefighters every day with disease, with the aftermath, sort of, with seeing what happens to people, and it's difficult. It's just a blessing to us to be involved in something that's proactive, to search for that cure for these horrible diseases. We will find a cure someday, and we're going to keep doing this for many years to come and until we do so. In thanking you all, we want to present you with this T-shirt from the Muscular Dystrophy Association, as our way of saying, we appreciate it, we're going to keep doing this as long as you let us, and we're partners in this thing, with MDA, with firefighters, and our city council. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And just to show what wonderful organizations and campaigns like this pull together, we have both the union representative and also Deputy Chief Emil Mack, the management of our fire department here. They're working together hand in hand to help out on this cause. I'd like to bring forward Deputy Chief Emil Mack.
Thank you. As was said, it's truly inspiring to see the courage and the irrepressible spirit of people that live with MSD or MDA, excuse me, every day. It truly opens the heart of the city of Los Angeles, the people that have so generously given to our firefighters, that have stood on many street corners asking to give our MDA people the support they need and the financial support. So, it is truly very heartwarming to see the response of our city. As said before, Councilman Cardenas, thank you for your leadership. Our partnership has definitely been made very strong with our labor, UFLAC, thank you, and the MDA, and then all the departments that have joined us in this significant effort that we are embarked upon. So, again, thank you so much to our city for the response that it has given and the love, obviously, that came forth with their giving. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Mack. Also, today, we normally would have Abby Amali, the National Goodwill Ambassador for the MDA with us, but she's been feeling a little bit under the weather. She travels and does this many, many times, but today she just could not make it. So, we miss her very much, but we know she's here in spirit, and she would be here if she could. And with that, I'd like to bring up our last speaker, and that is someone that, he grew up, everybody knew him as, just Tom, but now everybody knows him as Shotgun Kelly.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Hey, listen, I gotta tell you something, I really want to thank you so much, man. This is a real shot in the arm for our fundraiser. And so, Councilmember Cardenas, thank you very kindly, really appreciate it. It's very important to us that this happens. You know, I've been doing the telethon for over thirty-five years and twelve years on Channel 9 here in Los Angeles as a co-host, and we talk about the muscular dystrophy that we want you to, we want you to donate to Jerry's Kids for muscular dystrophy. But, again, we want to make a point that we have over thirty thousand Americans living with ALS, and what we're doing, May is ALS Awareness Month, and so this is what we'd like you to also focus on, the people who are living with ALS. You know, on the telethon, you see Jerry accepting checks from the firefighters across the country. I mean, check after check after check. I mean, they really save us in troubled times. And the LA City firefighters are no exception. I was on my way to K-Earth 101 CBS Radio where I work, and who was out there in the middle of the street in the Miracle Mile? That's right, it was a firefighter with this boot right here. Now, listen, I ask people on the telethon every year to donate to Jerry's Kids, and I always say, I wouldn't ask you to do something that I wouldn't do myself. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to reach into my wallet right now, and I'm going to pull out a couple of Benjamins. As a matter of fact, here's one, one Benjamin right there. That's $100. And if I may be so kind, another Benjamin, there it is. You better believe it, blame it, come out, come out, come out. You know, one of these days, one of these days, we're going to find a cure for muscular dystrophy, and we're helping so many people with ALS. It's just a fantastic organization. I've seen all the wonderful things that this organization has done with patients, and when the patients need something, MDA is there, and that is just so wonderful. You know, it touches my heart. I've known several MDA patients, and they are so helped by the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Now, in ending, I do want to say to Councilmember Tom Labonge that I'm going to keep playing Elvis. As a matter of fact, I played Elvis yesterday for you. And, of course, I'm going to be there for, as we salute law enforcement on 10/4 Day, that's going to be great. And Councilmember Zine, I don't know if he's here, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that my colleague Charlie Tuna says hello to Councilmember Zine. So, there you go. So, anyway, it's going to be a good year, I know it's tough times, but with your help, Tony, doggone it, thank you very much, from me and from MDA. And, thank you, what can I tell you?
Thank you.
Every cause has a root. In 1954, two firefighters decided to start this campaign, and yet, $200 million later, here we are still filling the boot. But at the same time, my start on this was just a few years ago, when my little friend Daniel got diagnosed with muscular dystrophy. And he called me on the phone, and he said, "Will you donate?" I said, "Yes." And he said, "Well, how much?" And I said, "How much do you want?" And unlike us politicians, he's not used to asking for money over the phone and fundraising and all that stuff. So, I said, "How's a thousand dollars, Daniel?" And he just got kind of silent, and I could hear him tell his mom, he said, "Mommy, he said a thousand dollars." And I could hear him in the background saying, "Tell him thank you." So, that was my start. And as soon as I found out that this is a badly needed campaign in Los Angeles, as Pat McCosker mentioned earlier, over the years, the city of Los Angeles firefighters, for some reason or other, the management didn't understand why or how we should make this work. And now, over the last couple of years, this has been working, and we are raising close to $200,000 this year. But I just want to give Daniel a thank you for giving me a call and sharing with me and having the strength to go out and do something about it, even though he's only about nine or 10 years old. He made that phone call, strong little boy, and we all want to find a cure for everybody, including Daniel. So, with that, it's my opportunity and honor to give this a certificate of recognition signed by all of the electeds in the city of Los Angeles to the Muscular Dystrophy Association for all of their wonderful continued work, and also to remind them that every time they look at this, they shall be reminded that the city of Los Angeles is a partner in this campaign, and we will continue to be a partner until we all see our goal accomplished, which is to find a cure for MDA and ALS.
And as you're presenting that, Mr. Cardenas, I'd like to recognize Mr. Labonge for next-
Thank you, I just want to say, let's give Mr. Cardenas a big hand, it is very important, I mean that. From time to time, all of us stand up and organize, but Tony, you brought this to us, and that's really to be commended. And I want to thank the fire department, a shout-out to sixty-ones there on the Miracle Mile where you, Tom, made your deposit, and also those at eighty-sixes at Vineland and Ventura who raised over $5,000 to help the cause, which is such a challenge. We don't know, every day's a blessing, we wake up, and all of a sudden, you have to fight this battle. And from Jerry Lewis to everybody down, firefighters have made a difference. And making a difference right now is Isabel Weezer, who's going to walk over right now, because that little plea from Shotgun Tom Kelly, you should have given $101 there, Tom, the marketing, you did, yeah, you got it, you just know that. But here comes Isabel, she's got something from Councilman Cardenas, something from herself, and something from me. So, Isabel, we can start it out there. So, all right. Good. And, you're right, Tom, we got it. Very good. And I thank you, and Tom, you're a voice, which is so good to get it out, and I thank you. And again, Mr. Cardenas, all of us have different roles that we play, but I love this boot thing, and then I got, coming down, Jose was talking about, they were on Twenties, was down on Glendale Boulevard, right at Berkeley, and Fifties was right there on Fletcher, right at San Fernando, and they got at all corners there to help in the cause. Congratulations, everybody, as we fight with you to fight the fight for MDA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And Isabel is going to bring my money over there for me, if she'll take it in and put it into the boot, so we can pass the boot, as they say, instead of pass the hat around here.
We have our own little Vanna White in the city chambers now.
We do, there she comes. Oh, she's getting more money from somebody else here.
She's getting good at this, she's working the crowd.
She's matching.
She's working the crowd.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, and as Pat McCosker said, the firefighters, the men and women, are going to be doing the barbecue outside of City Hall, right here on the lawn. This is live on Channel 35, so if you want to get off your couch and come have some hot dogs and potato chips and stuff and give to a great cause, get us over the $200,000 mark so we can break the record. Again, from 11:30 to 1 o'clock, right now as we speak, just outside of City Hall on the beautiful lawn, the firefighters are having their barbecue to finish off the Fill the Boot Campaign. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Perry, I know you're only going to introduce you for your presentation, but I know you have an introduction.
Madam Chair, I would like the members of the Seventy-Fifth Street Block Club to stand up, and I want to acknowledge them publicly, they are one of the longstanding block clubs in Council District 9, and they're here today to tour City Hall. They were founded in 1995 with the purpose of enhancing the quality of life around their neighborhood, which is bounded by, excuse me, Seventy-Fifth Street, Florence Avenue, San Pedro Avalon Boulevard, and Seventy-Sixth Street, more streets than I think I needed, but that's okay. They have a strong membership, and several of the members of the club are here today, including President Mr. E.P. Charles and Assistant Secretary Mrs. Ada Williams, and I'd like to welcome them and give them a round of applause if you would mind. And then, secondly, the Emanuel Arts High School Academy of Finance, if you would please stand, and the AP US History Class. These classes, these AP classes are about learning about city government, local government. The Academy of Finance students are learning about financial management planning, international relations, accounting, and the budgeting process, and I am very, very proud that they've come with their great teacher today to learn about their local government. And so, welcome, welcome very much to both the block club and to Emanuel Arts students, thank you.
And Ms. Perry, it is your turn.
It's also my pleasure to welcome a very special individual, he is Los Angeles Superior Court Judge David S. Wesley, and he's brought his team with him, and I will have him introduce them when he has a few words. He previously served as supervising judge for the criminal portion of the Superior Court, and in addition to being recognized for his humanitarian efforts, he has received numerous awards for outstanding service in the administration of justice. Most recently, he received the 2008 Jurist of the Year Award from the Judicial Council and the Benjamin Aranda Judge of the Year Award from the Mexican-American Bar Association. And Judge Wesley has a history of service to the young people of our city. He does believe in second chances and works to afford young people with the tools they need to help turn their lives around. He presides over the Dorsey High School Teen Court twice a month, and it's a program that diverts young offenders from the traditional juvenile justice system to high school-based courts. Teen Court links students, schools, teachers, parents, juvenile offenders, local police, civic organizations, volunteer attorneys, and the Los Angeles County Probation Department and the Superior Court together in a collaborative effort to reduce recidivism and encourage juvenile offenders to accept responsibility for their actions. During these two-hour after-school sessions, the students serve as jurors, court clerks, bailiffs, and it allows them to get hands-on experience in dealing with the legal profession and with law enforcement. He guides the Los Angeles Teen Court Program with the philosophy that a juvenile offender does not have to continue down a path of delinquency and destruction if given the right opportunity. He's a role model to young people and adults throughout, and his tireless efforts are deeply appreciated, and that's why I wanted to take the opportunity to salute him for his exemplary efforts and contributions that he has already made to our city. So, let's give him a big round of applause.
I'm here with Camilo Cruz, our Community Relations Administrator extraordinaire, and Manny Vargas, our Judicial Fellow. This is the entire team for the Teen Court in Los Angeles County. I want to thank Councilwoman Perry for her kind remarks, and I want to thank the Council Chairwoman and all the other council members for the recognition of this program that we're so proud of. I accept this recognition on behalf of the many teachers, probation officers, and other judicial officers that have shown a passion and vision to support the Teen Court Program in Los Angeles County, a program that we know has a significant impact on the troubled youth of our city and county. There are currently 70 million Americans under the age of 18, that is about a quarter of the US population. Last year, there were 2.3 million juveniles arrested, 17% of all the arrests in the United States. They actually accounted for 25% of the violent crime arrests. Nationwide, 1 million cases were processed through the juvenile justice system, and in California, we have 12% of the nation's youth, but 28% of the nation's incarcerated youth. We in the justice system know that you cannot lock everybody up. Our jails, our prisons, our juvenile halls are overflowing. We have to have early intervention programs designed to identify and work with our troubled youth. Teen Court is just such a program. Right now, we have 17 teen courts in Los Angeles County, all done by volunteers, there's no money involved. And along with our Shades Program, which is partnered with the Museum of Tolerance and designed to work and attack hate crimes and hate incidents on our high school campuses, have continued and will continue to impact troubled youth in our community. I promise that we will continue these efforts, even in these tough economic times, and I will continue to ask you, our council, for your support in both transportation of our kids and any other support that you can give us. We thank you again for this recognition, and we thank Councilwoman again.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much.
Ms. Perry, thank you for recognizing a judge. I had the pleasure, Judge, of being able to come to your chambers and tour, and for those of you that have not gone over there, he can describe to you the kinds of things that he is doing to help these young people and to really lead the court, and I just want to say thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty, and I challenge all of my colleagues to do the same. I know many have come, but come over and hear what you're doing at the court, so thank you very much. Thank you. And Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to rise and thank the judge as well. This morning is a great morning, you can hear all the good work that occurs in the city, but to see someone actually in the court system, stand up, and say we can make a difference, there's a different approach. You can have a human face, a kinder face, to sometimes this very hostile and cold environment when it comes to processing, is extraordinary. My hat goes out to Caesar. We both grew up in Cypress Park, we have friends who, right now, unfortunately, are probably incarcerated, some that didn't make it alive out of the neighborhood, and to see him in this role, getting back in this way, I know a lot of guys from his- a lot of guys from his generation saying, trip on Caesar, he's making it happen. So, congratulations, Caesar, and thank you, Judge. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next presentation, uh, will be by Mr. Labonge. I, I will join you. I'll ask Mr. Zine if he would take the chair for me. Mr. Zine, would you take the chair? I can join.
Wait till this. Gruel comes out right here.
Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you.
I'm joined here this morning with Controller-elect, Councilmember Wendy Gruel, as we honor Betty Garrett. And the reason why I wanted to trip on your first and last name for a moment, 'cause in Hollywood, they always do it twice, right? They say, take two. You got it?
That's right.
So, we take two. So, Ms. Gruel, join with me right now.
Thank you.
As we formally welcome.
Well, and, and Betty, we're so pleased, uh, you know, Tom and I wanna share you today. So, uh, we both wanted to recognize you for your many, many, um, accomplishments. Um, and, and we have, if you can see our page here, we have lots from your Academy Awards. And you were born May, no, it says May twenty-third here, and May, so, May twenty-third. You know what? That's my birthday. Yes, May twenty-third. So, we will share our birthdays tomorrow.
Happy birthday.
May twenty-third, nineteen nineteen, though. You're just a few years older than I am. Um, but, uh, and, and I don't wanna take all of your thunder, Mr. Labonge, 'cause you have a lot here. But she is not only, um, someone that we have all grown up with watching on TV, in the many, many roles that you have played, um, and that you are an actress, a comedian, and a, um, and a dancer.
Singer.
A singer. Um, and you were trained at New York's Neighborhood Playhouse. Um, and you, so you couldn't decide between acting and dancing, and singing, it looks like. Um, so you tried both, first with Orson Welles' Mercury Theater, and then performing with Martha Graham's Dance Company. And so, you have, if you see all these people here today, who were here early, I saw you, you were here early, um, to be able to honor you and acknowledge you, um, and your many, many accomplishments. And I'm glad you are a resident of my district, um, and someone, uh, who has demonstrated, um, really, uh, what an icon you are here for the city of Los Angeles and for many of us. And we have enjoyed watching your career, um, and seeing you today. And so, I'm, I'm pleased to join with, as you can see, all of the council members, city attorney, active city controller, are all saying, um, we acknowledge you for your extraordinary talent and wish you a very happy birthday. Um, and glad that I remember my birthday was the same day as Becky Garrett's. So, thank you.
Wendy, thank you very much. The beautiful thing about you, Betty, is you have a lot of friends. You got two great sons, who are right here on either side. Andy, right?
Right.
And Garrett, right here. But look at all your friends who came down, as Ms. Gruel said early. Uh, the beautiful thing about life, uh, is, is the friends that you have. And through your life, uh, you've had many, many, many friends in the industry that's so important to Los Angeles, of the entertainment business. Uh, so I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, as Ms. Gruel said, all, the mayor and everyone there, uh, 'cause you are special. And you're vibrant, and you got love about, all about you. So, this is the person we wanna be around today and tomorrow, 'cause the greatest strength that we get is from the people who we see and know, and who we say hello to, and who share in their lives with our lives. So, Betty, congratulations. And now, therefore, be resolved by adoption of this resolution, the mayor of the great city of Los Angeles, joins with the Los Angeles City Council, the city attorney, the city controller, and hon, Betty Garrett, for a remarkable career and exceptional talent that the entertainment has entertained millions of people around the world. Let's hear it for Betty Garrett!
Mr. Labonge, were you gonna introduce your brother, Mark, that's here also?
Well, in a minute.
Oh, you can do that.
On the next one.
'Cause family's important.
I know. Very good. Mr. Zine, give Mr. Zine a big hand right there.
Thank you.
Right there.
Go ahead, Betty.
My two sons in back are gonna be here. Uh, my son Garrett once said to me, Ma, when you make a public appearance, tell them how old you are, you'll get applause. Um, so, I'm nine, I'm just gonna be ninety, uh, this next week. Thank you. See, he was right. But he didn't, he didn't tell me I was gonna get all this. Look at that beautiful thing. Uh, I, I was really worried that this whole thing was gonna be about the fact that I'm gonna be ninety. But I feel gratified that it also has to do with whatever contribution I've made to the community through my theater, Theater West, and all these wonderful actors and people, members back here of Theater West. Uh, because to me, that's the most important thing. Um, I, I feel that theater is a great, great art. And, um, to quote a wonderful woman, a dancer, choreographer, Bella Lewitsky, she said, "Art is food for the soul. And without it, the soul may die." And that's my motto. I feel that we hopefully are contributing to art in this community. And I hope I will continue to contribute, 'cause I ain't done yet.
Betty, I wanna do this here. I want you to raise your right hand. I want you to, if you could, say you're gonna be an ambassador for our ninety-plus celebration every year, where the recreation parks department invites all the seniors who are ninety-plus to friendship auditorium for lunch. And will you be our ambassador?
I will be your ambassador.
All right. What a great one. That's special. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Betty. Thank you, Tom Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Thank you very much. So, we're gonna...
You have another presentation, Mr. Labonge?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Here, I'll take the side.
We're gonna get the group, I wanna get you around right here. As we do, we got a big group coming through here.
Go on, Simon. Go, go. Go ahead, Richard. Go ahead.
And as we do the transition for, uh, another acknowledgement.
Yeah.
From Councilmember Tom Labonge.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, uh, so, very special person who's a guest in our city right now. She's the very dynamic First Lady of the Republic of Zambia. Please welcome Dr. Maureen Waramasa. Maureen is the former First Lady. Uh, Zambia is a very special place for us. Lusaka is our sister city since nineteen sixty-eight. Lusaka is our oldest African sister city for our program, which has twenty-five sister cities throughout the world. As you know, the program started by then-President Dwight Eisenhower, a people-to-people program. And, uh, we have a very special person in our city who leads up our program, Dr. Ernestine Robinson, right here. Give her a big hand right there. The former First Lady is being honored this weekend. And tomorrow night, there's a big dinner in your honor in the little town of Beverly Hills, which, uh, is a little west of us. But, uh, her passion includes the fight for health care, especially for mother-child, job, youth job corps creation, education and skill development, farming and agriculture, uh, wealth creation, industrialization, and dealing with the challenges of aging and poverty. Uh, you're a very special person. As we greeted each other, uh, earlier in the chambers here, we officially welcome you to the city of Los Angeles, on behalf of Mayor Antonio Birogoza, with his great commendation to welcome you to the pueblo. So much to have you here. So nice.
Thank you.
I wanna say a few words, please.
Thank you very much for this honor and for meeting the council this morning. I want to say that the partnerships and friendships that have been created between my city and Los Angeles are stepping block or building blocks for the two cities, and looking at the bigger picture of the bigger world. Would like to urge you to continue with the good work and sustain the relationship that is existing. And we are very grateful to Los Angeles City for all the works that you have been doing for our city in Zambia. Thank you once more for having us.
Thank you very much. We welcome the delegation. Mr. President, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you.
And we'll be back up in a moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, the Honorable Ed Reyes, CD one.
Good morning, Buenos dias. I'd like to call up the Department of Building and Safety. I'd like to recognize the Los Angeles City Department of Building Safety with its many efforts to maintain a safe and vital community. As the department celebrates Building and Safety Week, first observed in nineteen eighty, Building Safety Week annually raises public awareness of critical safety issues affecting every person, regardless of age or occupation. I have a lot of notes here about its technical background, but colleagues, we know how important building safety is for our city. They are the ones that implement our policies that come from the various departments, and they're the ones that make sure that what is realized physically, what we see, what we feel is based upon the inspectors, and all the processes involved in building and safety that allows us to have a safer city. In a city that has experienced earthquakes, we've experienced floods, we've experienced firestorms on our hills, it's the building and safety folks who are out there with our fire personnel. In my district, I have a different type of catastrophe. I have the type that actually sends people out into the streets, families out there in the streets without a roof over their head, because of inscrupulous landlords. I'm not talking about the good ones. I'm talking the ones that choose to ignore their buildings, that will put a layer of mud over a wall that's rotting and stinking, and say, "This is good enough for this family," when it's not. These are the folks that have to enter dangerous areas without a gun, without a shield, without backup, enter places that are infested with gangs. And they're the ones that come in and set the record that allows our attorneys, our agencies, to come into a building and say, "This should not be allowed to exist." These are the folks that do this night and day. When there is an emergency, building and safety inspector is on the spot. So, again, these are the folks that make it happen for us, and many, many different layers. We're very fortunate to have a department that's had, that's had award-winning, national awards, that has competed with so many agencies. They are considered nationally as one of the top one-hundred government agencies nationwide. So, I just believe that they are the unsung heroes, and we should acknowledge that for their hard work. So, without further ado, I'd like to ask Andrew Adaman, the Director of Building and Safety, to take the microphone. Mr. Adaman.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of one thousand hard-working men and women of Building and Safety, I would like to thank you for this recognition. Each one of the Building and Safety staff who have joined me here and represent their colleague in the, throughout the sixteen offices in the department, would tell you, building safety is our job number one, our first priority each and every day of the week, every day of the month, and so on. Also, I wanna keep, I wanna, uh, point out that when a major earthquake happens in some other part of the world, forty, fifty thousand people die. When a similar-sized earthquake happens in L.A., thirty, forty, fifty people die. Of course, fifty is one, fifty too many. Our goal is zero. But I wanna point to you that the work of these men and women in Building and Safety contribute to saving forty thousand lives every time there's a major earthquake. One other thing that I would like to share with you is, I know there's economic recession. I know that our, uh, colleagues in the construction industry are hurting, but we need to put things in perspective. As I speak today to you, twenty-one buildings, twenty-one high-rise buildings are almost completed in terms of the construction. Those are the buildings over ten stories in height. Twenty-one. Five of them are completed. Six of them are almost completed and occupied. And ten of them are well into the construction. So, twenty-one. To put things in perspective, historic perspective, from the nineteen ninety to two thousand five, fifteen years stretch, there was a grand total of three new high-rises built in city of L.A. That means one every five years back then versus twenty-one going on right now. Of course, we are having a difficult time, but this is, you are seeing the skyline of city of L.A. change. And hopefully, we are going to have a economic turnaround before long, and we are gonna keep that momentum going. Again, on behalf of Building and Safety staff, some of them are joining me today. Thank you for this recognition, and thank you for your ongoing support. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
And I just wanna commend Mr. Adaman for the work in the whole department. Uh, you mentioned earthquakes, and I remember back in nineteen eighty, this city wrote a, the URM ordinance, which is truly, uh, different than anywhere in the world. We had eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-four buildings that were not safe for habitation because of earthquake standards that were built prior to nineteen thirty-four standards. This city wrote a law that said, "You're gonna fix them whether you like to do that or not." And then we worked with the owners to fix them. When the Northridge earthquake hit, eight thousand and fifty or so of the eighty-one thirty-four buildings had been retrofitted and fixed. Not one of them collapsed in that earthquake. They, they had severe damage, not one collapsed. Of the remaining, less than a hundred, none of them did fall apart and collapse. Almost all of them have been torn down because of damage in the earthquake. So, we have really been a world leader in earthquake preparation. And I commend the department for being the first out front. Uh, San Francisco has still not passed the ordinance. They've talked about it, said, "Whoa, it's too expensive to put that on our people." Uh, and I can tell you, when they have their next earthquake, they're gonna have severe loss of life and damage, 'cause they haven't done what our Building and Safety Department told this city council to have the guts to do. So, I commend you. But more importantly, as the representative of that Northridge earthquake epicenter, Northridge, uh, in nineteen ninety-four, your people were out there within hours tagging buildings and telling people they needed to leave their homes if they weren't safe. My home, uh, your folks came in and said, "You need to get out of here and get out of here right now." And otherwise, we probably would've stayed in there. And then, when we had the aftershock a few days later, the roof in my bedroom collapsed into our, where I was, would've been sleeping. And so, uh, these people are invaluable to the safety of the people of L.A. We have been recognized in the world as one of the leaders in earthquake preparedness and, uh, and having our city ready. And I just commend you for that. I know when I go to earthquake conferences around the world, people always look to L.A. and its laws and its ordinances. And when you said thousands of people and forty, fifty thousand die in other cities, and we have maybe a hundred die in ours, the same-sized earthquake, that's because of what you folks do. And I commend you and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mr. Reyes, I just, I talk for my congratulations to Building and Safety, and also in particular Frank Bush, and the folks out in the San Fernando Valley that do such a great job out there on the enforcement. So, appreciate all the work you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President. In closing, I just wanna give you a, a small list of the awards, as cited in the resolution. They are recognized as Building Department of the Year, Building Official of the Year, Good Government Award, Grand Prize for Productivity and Quality, Treasurer of the Central City Association, Local Government of the Year, and the Rose Award among many others. So, thank you very much, and...
Thank you.
...all your hard work.
Thank you. Congratulations, Building and Safety. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next presentation, CD fourteen, Mr. Weezer. Jose Weezer.
Good morning, everyone and colleagues. Uh, as you know, this weekend, we commemorate Memorial Day. And as you know, Memorial Day is a federal holiday that commemorates the men and women who have died while milit, while in military service for our great country. It is a somber occasion, and as we honor those who gave their lives during war or military action, so that all of us here may enjoy our democratic liberties. It is important that we here in the city of Los Angeles remember the fallen. In Council District Fourteen, we have a wonderful tradition of working with the East Los Angeles Veterans Organization to host a twenty-four-hour patriotic vigil and Memorial Day observance. These events will occur this Sunday and Monday, and I'm very honored to have been asked to stand guard for a time at this great monument which honors our fallen heroes. The East Los Angeles Veterans Organization works with other nonprofits, schools, neighbors, friends, and other veterans to make these events truly special. I am pleased to be standing here today with members from the East Los Angeles Veterans Organization, Hector Elizalde, Dan Ortiz, Tony Zapata, and Robert Benavides. Uh, these are just a few of the many veterans that belong to this organization. And I'm also here today to honor an outstanding veteran, and his name is Joe Low... And I'm also here today to honor an outstanding veteran, and his name is Joe Lopez. He is but an example. Let's give him a round of applause. He isn't but an example of the many veterans that are still alive today and giving back to their community. Joe Lopez grew up in the Tortilla Flats section of Bow Heights and is a graduate of Euclid Elementary School, Stevenson Middle School, well, it was called Junior High School back then, and Roosevelt High School. He served during World War II and was assigned to the 91st Division Company D, which was a heavy weapons company. While in the military, he traveled all over the world, including North Africa, Naples, Italy, France, Germany, and Rome. He was discharged in 1945. He was married in 1941 to his beloved wife Dolores, who has since passed on. They had two children, Joel Junior and Diana, who are with us here today. Diana is with us here today. Joe worked for 25 years as a truck driver and retired in 1980. Since then, Joe has made it a point to be engaged and involved in his community. He helps at his church, Saint Mariana de Paredes. It was here that he met my in-laws, who are here with us as well, Richard and Rita. And Richard is a veteran from the Korean War. Let's give them a big round of applause. He has been in Usher at the 8:30 AM mass for 55 years. He's also a member of the Forever Young Club in Pico Rivera, as well as La Purissima. He now lives in Whittier with his daughter Diana and her family. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me in joining an example of the many veterans that we have, those that are still living with us, but also as a way of recognizing those that have passed on. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a huge round of applause to Joe for all his service to not only his community, but our great country. Thank you very much, Joe. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I want to recognize you for your efforts, your commitment, giving the ultimate sacrifice if so called by your country. Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And to those of you, I salute you. My father was a veteran of the 8th Air Force, flying over Germany in World War II. As you see, I have a flag here. My son is currently in the 5th Fleet US Navy off the coast of Iraq, and so we have a strong tradition. And I, like my father and my son, served in the United States Air Force in Vietnam, as did Mr. Rosendahl. We were the only two veterans on this council at the time, and if Bill was here, he'd take out his hat, which I'm taking out of his desk as a member of VFW and American Legion. We salute you as Mr. Rosendahl would do. Thank you for your service. God bless you all, and God bless all veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Mr. Weezer?
Yes, Joe will now share a few words.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks to Rio family for making this possible for me. I'm a veteran of World War II. I'm a product of East Los Angeles, and as he said, I went through Roosevelt High School. And you know, like my friend used to say, "What am I doing here?" Anyway, I'll give you a little highlight of one of my experiences I had during the war. And this was on my way to save Mussolini. Anyway, we were northern Italy, and we were in the motorized patrol, and we were supposed to get through a certain town there to save Mussolini from getting hung. Anyway, we went through a lot to get there. It took us quite a while, and we lost, we were three Jeeps and a Titan truck, and we lost some men getting there. There was about 15 of us. When we got there, there was about, well, about 10 left. The time we got there, we got there a half hour late. Mussolini was hanging by the rifters, him and his mistress and two others. And you couldn't even recognize him. They were kind of, the people just beat him up, and it was kind of awful. Anyway, we were late. We never made it, and that's just one of my highlights during the war, and it was awful. Anyway, as I like to say, war is hell. So anyway, just hope we don't have any more of those. And I want to thank you, and I appreciate being here, and thank the people that made this possible for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Joe.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And Joe was interviewed in a book called Forgotten Patriots: Voices of World War II: Mexican-American Veterans of Southern California. As you know, there have been many Mexican-Americans who have fought and died for this country, both immigrants and those who have lived here since, the Spanish were here. And we're very proud to have this East LA observance each and every year on the corner of Lorena and Cesar Chavez, where we not only honor all veterans, but those who came from the East LA area. And with us today, I want to invite Hector Elizalde, who will share a few words about this wonderful event that we have each and every year on the corner of Lorena and Cesar Chavez on Memorial Day. I'll use you first. Dan Ortiz.
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Dan Ortiz, not Hector Elizalde. But I'd like to thank you all, especially you, Councilman, who is our four-year support throughout the years for our Memorial Day event and through all our events that we have. Thank you. Mr. Wesson, I just wanted to recognize you. I remember many years ago, when you were Speaker of the Assembly, we got the California Veteran Homes passed, and now they're being built. When I go to the West LA VA, it's an honor to see that, and I remember you, so thank you. Mr. Smith and Mr. Rosendahl, thank you for your service, and every other veteran here. I served in Desert Storm, and I'm a member of the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Disabled American Veterans. Anyone I can join, I've got a card for them. So thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, Pro Tem, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen, and those that are viewing this program, my message today is to remind each and every one here, and I would appreciate it if there would be silence for this message, not for me, but for those who have given their lives in our defense. I get emotional about this because many times, there's a misinterpretation of what Memorial Day is all about, and what we as veterans try to do. And especially for me, my last two months during the Vietnam War, I was assigned to an honor guard here at Fort MacArthur. And I thought it would be the easiest duty that I would ever pull in my last two months or three years. But you know what? It was the most difficult duty I ever pulled because I was burying two and sometimes three GIs a day. And I pledged to myself back then that I would never allow myself just to sit on the sideline and not get people to remember the sacrifice that Americans in every war have made. Today, as we speak, there's over 4,000 GIs who have been killed in Iraq, Afghanistan. We in East Los Angeles are very grateful for our fellow brothers and sisters, not just Latinos, but everyone who have made the ultimate sacrifice. And when we talked about this a couple of years ago, we said, "What can we do to really show that we care about what these GIs and now men and women have done?" We decided to institute a 24-hour honor guard that starts at 10:00 AM on Sunday at Cinco Puntos, Cesar Chavez, Lorena in Indiana, at the All Wars Memorial. We invite the public, we invite elected officials, and I'm proud to say that our city council member, Jose Weezer, opens the first honor guard at 10:00 AM on Sunday. And the last honor guard is by Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard and her husband, who served in the Marines in Vietnam. I invite each and every one here today and the city council members to take time to be there, but if you can't, go back to your communities and talk about Memorial Day, about the sacrifice that has been made. Councilman Smith, this is close to you. You have a son there. But I want you to think about the young children that I just recently read about, a little Juanito Gonzalez and Maribel Castro. They live thousands of miles, one in the Pacific Coast and the other in the Atlantic Coast, but they have something in common. Every day, they go home after school, and they ask their parents, now get this, one asks his mother, "When is my father coming home?", and the response is, "Soon." The other asks, "When is my mom coming home?", and the father responds, "Soon." The problem is that you try to tell a six-year-old, "When is soon?", and for them, it should be "right now." But that's not happening because American men and women are serving their country. And I think the very least that all of us can do in respect to the fallen is to take time to remember them appropriately during this weekend. And if you can join us at the All Wars Memorial, stand guard for 30 minutes. I don't think that that's a lot to ask for the life that the fallen have given for us. After the 24-hour vigil at 10 o'clock on Monday, Memorial Day, we begin our Memorial Day service. Traditional Memorial Day service, which I'm proud to say has been celebrated at that location for over 62 years. So I welcome each and every one to please join us. I would like to ask the city council for the following consideration. I think that a city as great as ours should plan a truly Memorial Day event, something that the rest of the nation can point at and look at and say, "You know what? Los Angeles really knows how to pay respect to our fallen comrades." So I want to work with Councilman Jose Weezer to see if we can bring an idea and something that we can all be proud of. I ask you right now, before I conclude, to please rise. Please rise.
We can ask everyone to rise.
And I want you to take one moment, one minute, in your mind, to remember perhaps a friend, a relative, or someone that you know who has served this country and who has fallen. Take a moment to reflect on. Thank you. Madam President, members of the city council, Councilman Jose Weezer, thank you for this honor.
Thank you. And Mr. Weezer, we do have two councilmembers that would like to make comments. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. And to the veterans, thank you for your sacrifice and contributions. And I want to remind our viewers at home that Canoga Park in my district, we will have a Memorial Day parade on Sherman Way Monday starting 11 o'clock in commemoration of our veterans. We in the San Fernando Valley and throughout the city of Los Angeles appreciate what the veterans do, and communities do turn out with the American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, with all of the folks coming together. And if people want to show their support, their patriotism, come to one of the local events taking place commemorating the dedication, the sacrifices of our veterans. Again, this coming Monday along Sherman Way from Topanga to De Soto in the west San Fernando Valley, all invited to come show your respect for our brave heroes, the veterans of the United States Military. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to also rise and thank Councilman Weezer for your message. It's so important that we continue to remind folks, and in Cypress Park too, I just want to share with you that in the past seven, eight years, the Friends of Cypress Park Improvement Association, many of them are veterans of different wars, the Great War, Korea, Vietnam. The younger veterans from the most recent wars are gathering at an intersection and actually have veterans jump off a plane and land within the park area. And there's another message we're giving is honoring those who gave the ultimate price, but also demonstrating to the young people who are nonsensically killing themselves over names of streets and numbers on streets, this gang culture that's been so pervasive, is showing them that many have given their life for our way of life, and to disrespect it and to harm each other the way we do makes no sense, especially when so much gave their life for us to continue to live in this great country. And so I appreciate what you're saying, and we need to reinforce that message over and over again. And it is spreading out throughout the city, especially in the areas where you have had such a high number of deaths disproportionately when you look at how many have given their lives. So thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Lavang.
I thank you, Mr. Weezer, and all that are down here. This is a tremendous weekend, and it's great that we stop and reflect. As I looked at the newspaper today, it all had Memorial Day sale, Memorial Day sale, Memorial Day sale. The challenge is that we should never forget those who gave their lives. And I remember Kurt Schroeder, who was a classmate of mine at John Marshall High, who died in service to this country in an assignment in Korea in the mid-'70s. Everyone should know someone and remember them and reflect. And I also joined with Mr. Garcetti, our colleague, as we put the American flags on the Hyperion Bridge in memorial to the veterans of World War I. Thank everyone for the wonderful job, and Mr. Weezer, thank you for your leadership here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Both my father and grandfather were in the Army and think of them on Memorial Day as we recognize those who gave their lives for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to all of you, and certainly thank you to Hector for really uniting us here today and allowing us a moment to show our respect for those living and past veterans. And as many of you know, I'm very proud of my immigrant roots, but on Memorial Day, I certainly get emotional and touched to see that there have been many veterans that have allowed a country like ours to prosper that provides liberty, justice, and economic opportunity, and that's why so many immigrants continue to come to this country because of the work and the veterans who have laid their lives on the line to make this the country where it is. So thank you so much, and thank you for all your service, and thank you to the East Los Angeles Veterans Organization for putting this on for 62 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Would like to ask that we, item number 14, oh, excuse me.
You know, I was just thinking, standing there, I just turned 88 on May 3rd, and about that time, I think the city hall was built, and that's what I was thinking about, you know, that's many years ago. No wonder I feel old. Anyway, the city hall and I are like brothers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to continue item 14 for one week. We have one final presentation by Mr. Lavang that we will hear now, and then we will go through the remainder of the agenda. A reminder again, we will be losing Coram at noon.
Madam President, I'm joined by Mr. Parks as we honor one of the great citizens of this city and this state and this country, Dr. Clarence Shields. Dr. Clarence Shields is one who has made an impact in his life. He's a doctor of medicine, of orthopedic medicine. He is a very special man who went to Loyola High School, then went to Creighton University, if I have it correct, at Omaha, Nebraska. It's a long way from Los Angeles. So you went there and got a great education there. Through that time, you came back and you pursued this profession. And if I may, doctor, I know I need glasses now that I have to read this here, but he's one of the most respected orthopedic surgeons in the country who specializes in sports medicine, shoulders, elbows, and knees. As I said, Dr. Shields attended Creighton University in Omaha and then also went to serve on at UCLA Medical Center for his internship. Moving across town, he completed his residency, the orthopedic surgery at the Los Angeles County USC Medical Center, and has been certified as an orthopedic surgeon by the American Board of Orthopedic Surgeons. All this is part of his contribution with the team of Curlin-Jope Orthopedic Clinic, a pioneering facility of sports medicine. For over 50 years, have made a difference. When everybody talks about athletes and others who need help, they come to these When everybody talks about athletes and others who need help, they come to these doctors to get help, to get their healing, to make a difference. His work has been honored in many, 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 many roles. We first met when he was the team doctor to the Los Angeles Rams when the Rams played in the Coliseum, and I was with NFL Films. And we'd always chat a little bit, and I always admired you there. And then as life goes on, you come closer together. His best friend is Pat at Pamco, right there in Silver Lake, and all the folks in the neighborhood who knows you, how small the world actually is. But what we're here honoring him today is that in 1994, he founded Team Heal, helping enrich athletes' lives. Team Heal, as Bernard Parks will talk about, has made a difference in the life of young people in Los Angeles, in South Los Angeles, and made a difference in helping them with their bodies. A good body is a good mind. A good mind and a good body could do anything. And there's no stopping anyone there. So I'm just pleased on this day to join with the council in honoring you. But before we finish off with March, I want to ask the great councilman of the 8th District, the pride of then John Viani High, Los Angeles City College, and USC, the former chief of police for Los Angeles, who's now our great council member for the 8th District. Bernard Parks has a few words here.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you for the award. Oh, no, it's for Dr. Shields. Okay. No, I just wanted to comment. Dr. Shields has done something that, if you've not played sports, it may not resonate with you. But in my era, you had a physical before you played sports, where they just had you walk through a line, and some parent who was a doctor kind of looked at you and said you were physically fit to go play. That was the total situation. And if you got hurt on the field or during the game, they would say, "Go up dirt on it and keep playing." And so these are the kind of things that he has turned it around, because if you've gone through the Pop Warner era, if you've gone through high school football, you see some debilitating injuries for young people, mainly because of the lack of care and the lack of immediate attention. So what Dr. Shields has done is brought forth Team Heal, to where he provides physicals and expert medical attention to high school athletes, and also is there during the game in case something occurs. And so this is something that he's dealing with schools that often are in neighborhoods where 50% to 60% of the families have no medical insurance. So it adds to that burden. So I wanted to just say a couple of words and say to his wife, Barbara, thank you for letting him do this. And also, if you ever have a free Sunday afternoon, when Team Heal puts on an event, go there, support them, find a way in which you can enjoy the entertainment that they bring in behalf of that program, that then translates to services for many, many high school and very young athletes. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. And I could also add to, my brother Mark, who's right here, is an athlete, and he at John Marshall High School and Gwendolde College, but also, he was a benefactor of Dr. Shields' care as a cinematographer and a cameraman, having ruined his shoulder and got it healed by Dr. Shields. And a couple of these, too. I hope that's all. But we have your wonderful wife, Barbara, here, and also the director of Team Heal, Doris Dillard. So we want to welcome you both. And I just want to say that, again, in our lives, we don't know when we cross paths again. But we cross paths, and you know how special a person is by their heart and what they do. And as Bernard said, the young men, the young men of the Southern League are bigger than the men of the Northern League. And they hit hard at Crenshaw when they come in here. And to help those young people, to make sure they have strong bodies, to have good minds, to do well in school, is truly a gift that you give back to the community. So on behalf of the Mayor of Los Angeles, Antonio Villagosa, and our whole city family, by adopting this resolution, we hereby salute you, Dr. Shields, for your many, many years in sports medicine and orthopedic surgery, and commend you for your work. And that is the sound man saying, "My time is up speaking, but not as yours." Congratulations, right here, all the way. Congratulations.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Thank you. Good to meet you. Okay. Well, thank you both. It's not very often that some of the things that we do to share our skill sets with the children in our community ever gets recognized. So this is truly a very heartfelt thank you from some people who we didn't even know were watching. It's not why we do what we do, but I think in my former job, as Tom knows very well, the Rams had a fully equipped training center. They could rehabilitate at Ram Park. They had a full-time athletic trainer and a doctor at all their games. So that's the model that we use to create Team Heal. We have four schools, Mandel Arts, Crenshaw, Carson, and Banning High School. Each has a full-time athletic trainer, who's a college graduate, master's degree, and is capable of taking care of ordinary things like sprained ankles. We also can rehab everybody at school. So I think that, just to give you an example, there were 20,000 visits to the training rooms in our four schools last year. We just completed physicals on two of them, and our physical is a little different than what Councilman Parks was talking about. My wife, Barbara, who really is the operations person behind Team Heal, has connected with UCLA iMobile, so we do eye exams. We do orthopedic exams. We do internal medicine exams. We also do cardiac exams. And we've been able to convince some of our patients, who are also cardiologists, to come and do echocardiograms on our children for free. So this past week, we found two children who didn't know they had a defect in their heart that could be life-threatening. So these are the kinds of things that make it all worthwhile, what we do. We think that every student who plays sports in high school, whether they're male or female, should have a full-time athletic trainer at their school. And if you play against some of our schools, I get a lot of phone calls, "How can we get a trainer? And how can Team Heal be at our school?" It takes all of us working together to do this, and I know this is not an easy time now, but we have to think of some creative way to protect our children. They deserve quality medical care on a daily basis, not just on game day. So I want to thank you for this recognition, and I certainly want to introduce my wife, who does the day-to-day operations between, behind all of us front guys, there is somebody who does the work, and it's Barbara. So Barbara, thank you for allowing us to do this to our children. And Doris Dillard is the chairman of our foundation board. All of us are volunteers. The only people who have a full-time job are the trainers at our schools. And it's not easy to get your friends and your family to work for free, but we're working on it. And thanks again. This is truly a very touching moment for us to realize that in the city, some people do realize what you do, and want to say thank you, and we truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange.
Pitch real quick here for scholarships.
Okay. What I just want to say is that Dr. Shields is not only working on the athletics of the young people, but their academic endeavors. And so we started two years ago, giving scholarships to Team Heal scholar athletes. So they're encouraging these young people to focus on the fact that academics are important, they could get injured on the field, but they need to have their education. And so that is another arm of Team Heal. Thank you.
And I'll just have to say thank you, and I know that we're out of time, but we have so much that we incorporate into our program, the scholarships. We have classes, ROP classes, that our certified athletic trainers teach on campus. They teach our children about their bodies, their minds, nutrition. So it's a lot of arms to our program that we've started. And we just want you to know that we'd like you to look at our website, www dot teenheal dot org. If you'd like to make a non-contribution, we are nonprofit, and, you know, times are not easy, and so we want to keep this program going. We're in four schools, and there are about 21 other schools that need our service. So all the support from you would be wonderful. Thank you so much for the honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Parks, I know you're going to leave the room, which would be great, so we can recuse you for this item. When you leave, colleagues, we'll be going to item 13 and then item 19. So when Mr. Parks has left the room, if I could, have Mr. Sax, who is the speaker card tonight, item 13, please come to the podium.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sax. Item 13 is an issue regarding a bond being issued. Did you read in the LA Times the information regarding the Alameda Corridor bond? The ratings for the Alameda Corridor have been lowered because of decreased container traffic. Lawa has a bond that they issued that's covered by the FAA, according to what Councilman Rosendahl said. But the city council also authorized a bond to be issued for the same exact money when they first authorized the renovations at LAX. Who's covering that bond for $950 million? What kind of protection does the public have? In Orange County, the Transportation Department issued a bond for the freeway. According to a hearing, according to a conversation at Southern California Area Governance, that bond, if they lose ratings, it won't cost the public anything. There was a bond discussion in council chambers when Mr. Fujioka was the CIO, and the concern was...
Madam President, he's not talking about this settlement bond.
Hold my time, please. I'm trying to get to a point, Madam Chair. I'm interested in finding out what protection is going to be offered for this bond for the city, so that we don't get held, holding the stick. And in order to do that, I'm trying to show some examples of other bonds that have been issued, and where we stand. That's my point, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Council Attorney, excuse me. So Mr. Cardenas had a discussion with Mr. Fujioka regarding a bond that was issued here. The difference was $17 million. So my point again is, what protections? Where do we stand as the public? Where does the public stand in the city's issuance of this bond?
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Yeah, yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Madam President, just a point of clarification. The discussion that we had here on the floor was not over $17 million. It was a $500 million bond issuance. And the difference between Mr. Fujioka, who I respect very much, was his feeling that we were going to lose potentially $20 million if we did the deal a certain way. The fact of the matter is, the council voted to do it in a different manner, and the report came out that was $5 million savings in the favor of the city. So just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 13, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Thank you. We're now going to go to item number 19. We do have a public hearing required on this item. Again, colleagues, I'll just remind you, we probably, if not noon 12:10, we will lose a quorum. David, call the following individuals, if they could please line up. David Kurendian, Saul Rice, Ken Jackson, followed by Arnold Sax.
Councilmembers, hi. My name is David Kurendian, and I represent two entities that are potential buyers of the two buildings on the subject track map. As a buyer, we have depended on the planning department to make sure that these new buildings will comply with the existing codes and laws. We have discovered that there are serious violations with respect to the parking requirements and the use permit. We have informed the planning department, Mr. Michael Legrand, Mr. Bertoni, and Ms. Goldberg, about these violations, and they have told us that they will be investigating. The track map is before you for final approval, without the investigation being completed. To give an example of one of the violations, each building is built for eight tenants, but the building permit states parking calculated as a single-tenant warehouse is okay per Z.A. Michael Legrande. Also, on the supplemental building permit dated February 18, 2009, the use of the building is changed to a multi-tenant use. The clearance document reads, "Allowed to calculate required parking as a single-tenant warehouse in lieu of as multi-tenant use, approved by Jack Chiang per Chief Z.A. Michael Legrande." Councilmembers, Mr. Legrande is making these exemptions and effectively issuing variances without the proper procedures. The required parking for these two buildings are 319 spaces. The parking provided per permits issued are 115 spaces, and that is about one-third the required parking. The 115 parking spaces do not even comply with the minimum 139 parking required in the conditions of the track map that is before you today. I ask the council members to deny the approval of this track map and refer the matter to the planning department to make sure that these violations are addressed. I also ask the councilman Uzier to comment on this matter and give more information to the council, since we have discussed the matter with his staff more in detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, followed by Ken Jackson.
Madam President, firstly, I don't believe a quorum is present. I don't believe the council can act. There are members not present in the room. Councilman Parks is not present.
Councilmember Parks is off the queue.
Pardon me?
Councilmember Parks is off the queue. He had to be recused for the last item, so he has not returned back. There are 10 members present on the queue.
Madam President, members of the council, what is at issue here is more than just a final track map. I have brought with me my daughter, just as Councilman Huzzar has brought his, to see how the public business is done. The problem with this track map, and we delivered packets to each of you three days ago regarding this, is that this track map was approved in a back-room situation with a senior zoning administrator, Michael Legrand, simply signing off inadequate parking in violation, clear violation, of the parking requirements of the tentative approval. The tentative approval of this map required 139 spaces to cover 159,000 square feet. It was signed off based on some belief by the planning department that this was a single-tenant building, when in fact, these are two buildings with more than 16 tenants who will be forced to share less than 83 parking spaces. The impact on the adjacent community will be significant, and I believe that it is incumbent on the council to deny this map at this time, because it simply does not comply with the conditions of approval adopted by this council in the tentative map. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ken Jackson, followed by Mr. Arnold Sax.
Madam President, pro tem, councilmembers. My name's Ken Jackson. I'm with Dynamic Builders. We're the applicant. The parcel map of the track map that's before you has been in process for the better part of nearly two years. The gentlemen who spoke before me are under contract to purchase the two buildings that we have done a custom-designed build for. They have been fully cognizant of the parcel map, fully cognizant of all of the building applications and processes that we've been through. In fact, the client himself has made substantial changes to the building during its process that led to the impact of more tenant spaces being included. However, all that being said, this is not the forum for this debate. The parking issue that is at hand is one of dispute. It's a gray zone. This is a real estate matter that I don't believe that the council should participate in the resolution of. This is a parcel map that has been approved through a public hearing. It has gone through several dozen city departments for multiple approvals, with nearly 200 conditions of approval, all of which have been signed off. And it's specific to this issue in Planning Section 19B and a Finding of Fact B, Paragraph 2. This track map has complied with all of the requirements of the Subdivision Map Act under the City of Los Angeles requirements. We don't believe this is the forum for this particular issue. There is a resolution on the table through the purchase and sale agreement, and we believe that's the appropriate mechanism. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sax.
Yes, good afternoon again. Thank you, Arnold Sax. That was standing the conversation just heard. I'd appreciate the fact that the public is going to be impacted by this new building. They should know of some benefits, the benefits that would accrue from the Quimby fees. As with the Grand Avenue projects, where Quimby fees will be used to develop a park, I think upfront, the public should have the opportunity to know what Quimby fees will be collected, and what area of a park will be considered in the adjacent area that this construction is going to take place. At least they get a benefit from the impact of this new construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisert.
Thank you very much.
That closes public comment.
On Wednesday, when my office became aware that there were the tenants here to speak on this item, we asked for this item to be continued to today, so that we could get the parties together, along with our planning staff and our city attorney to review. parties together along with our planning staff and our city attorney to review what's before us. I've asked the planning staff to be here with us today as well as the city attorney's office. If I could ask the planning staff to please come up. And as I've been advised by the city attorney's office, we have, must act today. Today's the last day to act on this item, and so that's why we have it scheduled for today. So if the clerk, please hold my time. And if I could ask the, the planning, you were the zoning administrator for this track map, is that correct?
My name for the record is Maya Zatshevsky, and I was a deputy advisory agency on the track map. I just was asked to come today because my goal is out on bereavement leave today. So I'm going to try the best I can. I just found out about it this morning. But my, I looked through the map, and I looked through the clearances with the, it's a track map, not a parcel map, and all the clearances have been made. And so when a final map comes to council, and this is, as you said, the last day to act, the code has four provisions that have to be satisfied in order for the map to be accepted. And according to all the clearances, these have all, you know, all the improvements have been done, the fees have been paid, the map check fees have been paid, the taxes and liens have been paid. So it's my impression that the council should accept the final map. As far as the issues with the sign-offs, I think it's a separate matter that's not agendized today, that's not something that is before the council, but what I would recommend is if the gentleman is concerned that there's something improperly signed off at the counter, that the sign-off at the counter did not, was not a track map clearance, it was a building permit clearance, and so you can, he can file for a building and safety appeal. And then there'll be a review of the item and a report will be written, and it could possibly end up in the, in the Office of Zoning Administration for a hearing before a zoning administrator. So I think that's the proper remedy and not here at council today.
Okay. Great, thank you. And that is the same advice that we received from the city attorney's office, that what's before us today is to determine whether this, the final map conforms to all laws and the original tentative map as, as proposed. And they also mentioned to me that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time the maps are approved when we get to this point. And as suggested by our planning department, I would ask the tenants to file an appeal within the building and safety procedures so that you could make your case at that, using that avenue. And I would ask that, since we are being advised both by our city attorney's office and the planning department, that the tentative map does conform, and that's all, that's the standard we're required to look at today that we move forward and approve this tentative map. I do ask the tenants that, my office did everything possible to get the parties together, to talk to every department. We found that, you know, you could appeal. It's also, to me, it seems it's a private contract matter between both parties, as well as if you have issue with the signing and those issues, to please appeal with the building and safety procedures, we would be happy to provide you with that information if you so wish. So colleagues, ask that we move forward on this item. It is the last day to act. We've been advised that it has conformed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes. Thank you. Our next item is item number two. An amendment has been submitted on this item. Mr. Okay, are you speaking on this item? No, you don't, okay. Item number two.
Actually, just for clarification, item two, the hearing is reopened because there's a substantive amendment.
Do you wish to speak on this, Mr. Sacks, or not? On item number two, you submitted a card. Okay, I will take that no response as a no, closing public hearing. Mr. Alcon, you want to make sense of my, this, item number two.
Members, I've checked with Mr. Weston. I'd like to send this matter back to committee. I've introduced an amendment, two A. It's not an unfriendly amendment, but what I'm, what I'm striving for is to create criteria that is incorporated into the selection process that incorporates social responsibility. For example, how have these banks that may benefit from this business done with regard to the foreclosure crisis? What is their rating with regard to the Community Reinvestment Act? And are these banks, banks that locate in areas of the city that are, are largely unbanked? And, and, but basically, it is to establish criteria that creates a level of social responsibility for these people who will make a profit off of doing business with the city. LAHD is present, and if you would like to step to the microphone just to tell us if this...
Okay. Why don't we send the whole item back to committee? Send the whole item, especially.
You can discuss it after when it comes back. Let's, let's move it.
That's what this motion does.
Yeah, just send it to committee. We don't need to talk to him.
Okay.
Mr. Alcon, we are, we are in the threat of losing a quorum.
Just go, let's do it.
Okay. So we'll send it, we will send it back to committee. Item will be sent back to committee. Thank you. Go to our next item, I believe is item number nine. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification, since item number two had already been held, I wasn't sure it'd be called. I got to discuss the bond issuance regarding the other bond. Now, on this item, consideration of authority to submit potential grant applications in order to meet deadlines established by the federal government to secure American Recovery Reimbursement Act funding for the City of Los Angeles. That seems to be one motion. Then the other part of this, you're actually taking two actions in one motion. Approval of support letters for grants where the city is not the leading agency applying for, and related discussions. So maybe it's three actions. Who gets the money first? Who do, who do we believe? The mayor? Look and listen to his rhetoric regarding the police hiring. The council? Look, look how quickly they jumped into the L.A. Marathon fiasco. If you think that would cost money, if you think that won't cost money, ask the groups that count on the marathon for funding their programs. Will a fifty percent cut in participation affect them? And will they be able to recover any money from the, will they be able, will they be eligible for any of this recovery funding that the city seeks? It's ridiculous that you camouflage these motions within the motions and who will be affected and who will receive money. You hear phrases of openness, transparency, and accountability, but then when you come to apply them, you're quick tags at the room, leading the charge from behind again. The council's modus operandi.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam, this is not actually an action item, it's just a report welcoming you to come to the recovery meetings that we have on Fridays. We're going to go to public comment. It's Candido Mares, out in the San Fernando Valley.
Ma'am.
Thank you, Candido.
Good morning, Madam President. Happy birthday to you. May I give you one wish, that you be blessed with good health, you and your family. I want to thank the council, and especially Councilman Weezer, for always making Memorial Day so important. I want to thank him for introducing us to Mr. Joe Lopez from East Los Angeles. A few years ago, he introduced us to another great American, Mr. Guy Gobaldon, who has passed on, but he was before the council in nineteen, two thousand and seven. So we've had a lot of great Americans of Hispanic descent who, who were from East L.A. that nobody knew about. So I'm grateful to Mr. Weezer for letting us know about these individuals, but also to Mr. Greg Smith and Mr. Rosenthal, and to Mr. Smith's son for serving our country. I'm a proud American of Hispanic descent. My family goes back to the Civil War when my great-great-grandfather, Dinesio Maris, served on the side of the North, to my nephews who have served in the Iraqi war, Gunny Sergeant Dan Maris and Gunny, Joe Maris. So again, we have a great, great history of patriotism. So I want to thank the council for always making this a special day. And I want to make sure that we do make this a citywide event because we will join Mr. Zine. Thank you, Mr. Zine. We will join you on Monday for the parade there, but we need to make something very special in the City of Los Angeles. It's time that we finally do that. And there's other ways you can serve your city and your country, and that's by doing community service. Some people weren't able to go into the military. So if you'll do things for your community, if you'll serve the people of this great city, then you're doing as much as, as others who have served in the military. So again, I want to thank everyone and make sure that you get out and support and thank each military person that you see and thank them for their great service and their, a great dedication to this country. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Candido. Olivia Calderon, is Olivia Calderon here? Olivia Calderon. Richard Robinson?
Have a nice one.
Thank you, you too, Candido.
Madam President, members, Richard Robinson. We did not go to the moon. Ma'am, Reverend Wright is not wrong. Dick Gregory said the same thing when he ran for president. We, black people, did not go to the moon. Secondly, in June of two thousand and one, Senator Diane Feinstein, as a member of the Senate Committee on Intelligence, Select Committee on Intelligence, sent a memorandum to the Oval Office which indicated that the World Trade Center was about to be attacked. Reverend Wright is right. Oh, yeah, and incidentally, anyone with a mind knows that Osama bin Laden was killed in two thousand and one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sacks?
Thank you for running my time. I appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Sacks, I've indicated several times for you to come up, and please go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair. I know, I'm wasting time, just like the, like the two hours that were just spent for the public presentations. Today's headlines say, "Poor would be hard hit by state cuts." That's wrong. Poor will be harder hit by state cuts. But I really want to discuss an article in the L.A. Times regarding a motion that was presented in city council by Councilman LeBonds and Councilman Han, and seconded by Councilman Rosenthal. And in this motion, it stated that the L.A. Marathon, the idea to move the L.A. Marathon from Sunday to Memorial Day was a noble idea. When did that occur? When did that happen? What council was that heard in? I recall hearing a motion and a movement by the council to move the marathon from March to President's Day in February, Monday, where, according to Frank McCourt's mouthpiece, that's when Boston runs their marathon on Patriots' Day. So if it was moved that day, how could it be moved from Sunday to Memorial Day? The real loser here is the city attorney and the city attorney's office. You're politicians, you're elected. We expect you to lie. You can't change those spots on a leopard. But the city attorney is an employee of the city. He's supposed to answer to some form of standard with ethics. Asking council, that's not going to happen. I'm going to present a complaint to the new city attorney regarding this action and how this city attorney...
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, our next item, I believe, is a reconsideration of item number two. Madam Clerk, we could open the roll on reconsideration of item number two, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes. Okay. Mr. Alcon?
Members, we had a miscommunication on item number two. Essentially, we didn't want to hold back the list of existing, extending the current list for bond financial advisors. So what we do need to do, though, is we wanted to amend to refer subsections B, C, and D of recommendation to back to committee to create financial responsibility as part of the, the selection of the next bond team.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Eleven ayes. Thank you. I think that concludes our agenda. Anyone have announcements? I do know we have adjoning motions. I'm sorry.
Council has motions for posting referral?
Those will be posted, referred.
That would clear the desk.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. LeBonds.
Thank you. Once again, outside of City Hall on the grass here in the front, till one o'clock, the firefighters are going to be providing hot dogs and other food for five dollars a person to help raise money for the Muscular Disfunia Association. So I just want to thank all of you for supporting the organization and the event, and also till one o'clock today on the City Hall lawn here in downtown, the firefighters are going to have a barbecue at five dollars a person to help out the Muscular Disfunia Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LeBonds?
As you know, Ms. Grue, you were there this morning at the Department of Water and Power. We had a memorial for our workers. There's a new dedication of a monument for those workers of water and power, of which outnumber both the losses of police and fire over the history since nineteen twenty-two of the formation of the Department of Water and Power. Other tragedies of their memorials predates that, but we remember them as we remember all soldiers of the armed forces this weekend. Also, on Monday at Forest Lawn at ten a.m., there'll be a public program for the memorial of Memorial Day, and everyone is invited. And I also wanted to thank everyone for their involvement in these events. Lastly, I want to remind people that the marathon is this Sunday to come out, excuse me, this Monday, this Monday to come out and support all the runners who are running through the streets of Los Angeles on the Los Angeles City Marathon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, if I could, even announcement, Mr. Zine? Yes, Mr. Zine?
One more time, I'd like to inform our viewers that the Memorial Day on Monday, we will have the Canoga Park All-American City Memorial Day Parade along Sherman Way from Topanga through DeSoto, and south of DeSoto, USA will be performing. Again, it's this Monday, starting at eleven o'clock on Sherman Way between Topanga and DeSoto. Everyone's welcome. Show respect for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask everyone to please rise in the council chambers. Mr. Reyes? Yes, Mr. Reyes?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Colleagues, I, I stand here at the podium, I'd like to invite Domingo Salceda and his family, who will join me, come on over to the podium. I say I want to adjourn today's council meeting in memory of Andrew J. Salceda, son of Los Angeles Housing Department Director of Code Enforcement, Domingo Salceda, a member of the city family for over thirty years. His son, Andrew, was a former Los Angeles Fire Department firefighter who served our city with honor and heroism throughout his brief but storied career. The victim of a tragic motorcycle accident while riding with fellow coworkers of the Fire Department, Andrew died on Tuesday, May twelfth. From early on in his life, it was clear that Andrew wanted to leave the world better than he found it and helped those in his community. It's at the age of nine years old that Andrew first visited a fire station, and from that moment, his desire to become a firefighter was born. He would be later, he would later become a member of the Harbor Heights Fire Department Explorer Program. It was this program which sparked his interest in becoming a firefighter and educated him on the duties and responsibilities necessary to be a member of the department. A graduate of Whiter High School, Andrew worked tirelessly at his hope of becoming a firefighter. Having gained the necessary experience in service as an EMT, Andrew entered the L.A. City Fire Fighting Academy, determined to be a member of this close-knit and courageous family. After graduating from the academy, Andrew had finally accomplished his goal and served amply while in the department. When he was loved, when he loved his time as a firefighter, it was his son, Andrew Junior, that brought the most joy to this life, to his life. Andrew survived by his girlfriend, Marjorie, their son, Andrew, his mother, Pauline, his father, Domingo's stepmother then, and his stepsisters, Stacy and Catherine. My sincerest condolences, Domingo's family. And colleagues, I asked, Mr. Salceda, if he would be here. Many of you might know Domingo for his great work, over thirty years in the city. In nineteen seventy-seven, as a building mechanical inspector, he served the building safety department. He eventually was promoted as principal inspector, and in January nineteen ninety-eight, transferred to the housing department where he implemented the systematic code enforcement program. It's during this time where I meet Mr. Salceda, and he helped us with many, many structures. And his heroic effort has transformed the housing department's ability and been recognized as award-winning department. So I wanted to give a special acknowledgement to his family, to his son, and allow us the honor.
honor of presenting a certificate of tribute to the Salceda family.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And I would ask that all members adjourn in memory. Thank you. Are adjourning motions? Colleagues, I would ask that you would adjourn in memory that the two individuals who were murdered yesterday in Ventura are my second cousins, and I'll have a further one on Tuesday. But if you could just say a prayers for Brock and DeVina's family and their two children, nine and 11, who were there that evening, and that we hope to catch the person who brutally murdered them on Wednesday night. And their family last night are sticking together. There's a lot of them, many, many grandchildren, and my Aunt Helen and her husband Frank, who are trying to deal with this enormous tragedy for our family. Thank you. Any other motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Meeting is adjourned.